So, um, yeah, Anne just said we were waiting for Neil, but we have a quorum now anyway, so. All right. So I should probably look at my packet, right?
She has the information for the OXPO there.
Okay, I've got also additional information for the OXPO too.
Yep.
So I guess. Is there anything within this packet that's also addressed or that we need to look at, or?
For the OXPO? No, I think you had the information that Jules and I gave you from the minutes since, of the meeting on July 13, May 13. July, July 13.
Okay. So, um, has everyone had a chance to take a look at the information for the OXPO? And what the Conservation Commission is requesting that, you know, we do? Which is essentially give them a letter to allow the project to go ahead so that, you know, they will try to seek an $800,000, $400,000 award that they will need to come up with $400,000 in a match. But there were several open issues, one of which is the property that's currently owned by Plymouth. There's 92 acres. One is a parcel of 36 acres that, you know, essentially we own. And then there's a parcel of 56 acres that's in the Plymouth inventory, but it's owned by the Plymouth Athletic Club, Inc.
We, we own that piece of land and not the golf club, country club?
Um, what do you mean? We own, we own that, that parcel land, yeah.
Which parcel do, because there's the, there's the, the 56 acres that Plymouth Athletic Club owns? And then there's the 36 that the golf course owns, or at least according to the tax map. I was trying to understand which piece we owned.
The 36 acre one is owned by the golf course? Ah.
So neither of them are ours. They're just both in Plymouth.
Okay. And we also own additional property that goes across the highway too, but that's a different issue. All together, so. All right, well, the, now, why would they want to pay us $25,000 then? It's, it's, um, you know, the golf course is actually also owns that 104 acre piece in Holderness that, um, they're purchasing from the golf course, theoretically 150 or something like that, 150,000. And that is worth like 300 some odd thousand, but the owner is willing to, you know, take the loss, you know, for tax purposes, apparently. So I guess that's the deal. The golf course is going to sell their property in both Holderness and Plymouth to the Conservation Commission, I guess. And that the Conservation Commission will seek to purchase. Well, that makes no sense at all. Why would they have to throw $25,000 at us? When it's a deal with them and the golf course?
Right.
And it's still in the Plymouth inventory, but I mean, I don't quite get that.
I, I didn't see anything in our packet about, I don't know what the $25,000 you're referencing is.
That's, okay, I'm reporting that out of the Conservation Commission meeting of October 20th.
Oh, okay.
They, they agreed, actually, I don't think I brought the minutes, someone, they agreed to spend $25,000.
From their capital reserve fund?
Yep.
That's what I'm saying. Can they use their capital reserve funds to buy property in another town?
It's, it's our town now.
So how are they purchasing the one in Holderness?
Holderness has also got some skin in the game. I think they're, they're paying for that.
So that's a big question, like Plymouth Conservation Commission can own land in another town? Do we need like a memorandum of understanding with the other town that they're?
They're not, they're not owning that Holderness property. The Conservation Commission.
It sounded like.
Holderness Conservation Commission's.
So it's Plymouth and Holderness?
Yep.
Wow. That will be difficult.
Well, so, but it will all be put into conservation easement.
Yeah.
So, you know, then it's kind of in perpetuity and it's like, kind of like out of our hair. So I'm not quite certain why they would need to pay us $25,000 though. Or why they, they.
Isn't the $25,000 the portion of the grant that the town of Plymouth Conservation Commission wants to put in as their match towards the grant? I thought the money was going out to someone, not necessarily.
To us.
Not to us. They have a certain amount in their capital reserve that they want to use towards getting this piece of property into, it looks like it will be Oversight Committee comprised of one member of each Plymouth and Holderness Conservation Commission and all of these people here. But that would be the town of Plymouth's contribution towards the purchase of this property. That's what, that's what I thought it was, but I think Lisa, when she comes on or whoever's coming on later to discuss it, will, should have that answer.
All right.
That's what it sounded like to me too. They wanted to use the money in capital reserves to put towards.
That's why we need to go to town meeting to ask for the release of those funds as well.
Yep. Okay, and all this has to be taken care of. In fact, we, we have to have like an emergency meeting of PRLAC to get a.
Letter of support.
Yeah.
Yes.
So we're having that on the 29th because everything has to be done by the 30th. That's still, I mean, that's simply to, I guess, apply for the grant. Because they're not going to have an answer until town meeting anyway, so.
So I was kind of hoping to get rid of it.
Yeah, well.
But, I mean, if, if they're the ones that are saying they're going to maintain it and, you know, we're going to have, the police department's going to have to respond down there anyway if anything happens. So it's not really going to be an extra burden on them, I wouldn't think.
Yeah, so it's, it's not the best of both worlds, but once it goes in a conservation easement, and also their intent is to, you know, police it, or at least, um, you know, try to limit the number of parties down there or something, I don't know.
Good luck.
Yeah. And also probably clean it up too.
That'd be good.
And I think that's also what Holderness Conservation Commission, I mean, I've been on cleanups with them before. They do a good job of picking up. Any questions? Any answers?
I think it turned out a little different than we thought it originally was going to. I think we kind of thought that they were going to want Plymouth to take it over. And Plymouth, you were at the meeting in July when all the board was available to listen to it. We kind of wanted Holderness to take it over. Because it's on the opposite side of the river, but it looks like the Conservation, Plymouth Conservation Commission wants the piece that's in Plymouth and the Holderness Conservation Commission wants the piece that's in Holderness. And they're going to join forces and work together to develop it and take care of it.
Is the golf course in Ashland?
No, nothing touches Ashland, right?
No, parts of it are.
Yes.
Oh, it's not, nothing.
So where is Ashland on this?
Ashland's not involved. It's a golf course. I mean, we, the, the, the area they're going to conserve isn't in Ashland.
Okay. Oh, it's not, because in the, when they came to us previously, they were talking about a piece that was in Ashland as well.
Yeah, that's what I saw.
I don't think they are now, though. I think they, you know, apparently Ashland was out of this deal.
Yeah.
I think there's a, if you, if I may pull up that map real quick.
This one?
I made a new one.
Okay.
On, on the map that was attached to our packet, it looks like the kiosk that they're talking about is in Ashland.
Now, so.
Yeah, it's way down the corner.
This is, the trail goes down, I don't know if you can see my cursor thing, but this little blue square down there looks like the trail end. So there is a portion. Yeah.
Well, the peculiar thing is that they weren't going to include Ashland, and then we decided that it would be wise to have like, you know, conversations with this, with the select board and, because I don't think they have a Conservation Commission.
They did at one point, but I'm not.
Yeah, I don't think they have at this point.
Yeah, but not since six months ago.
So I think Lisa, you know, suggested that, well, she, she said she doesn't know anybody in Ashland, but Kathleen DeWolf is on PRLAC.
Yep, she's from Ashland.
Yeah. And also Eli Badger, I think we, you know, they can reach out to them, and so that's, they were going to do that after the meeting. But I didn't think they were going to be involved, or at least maybe they're no entity that they thought that they needed to have involved.
Does Ashland have to be involved for this to go forward? If it's in their town?
I think because are they also, therefore they're picking up the 77 acres as well from the golf course, right? So I think the golf course owns the three properties there that they're going to have to purchase. And you know, I think, you know, Lisa felt that they didn't have to be involved because it was just a golf course, you know, purchase and they can do whatever they want. Oh, okay, actually, what they wanted to do was put the Ashland piece into a conservation easement, you know, take it off the books essentially, just make it, you know, locked up forever. And that's when they said, well, shouldn't somebody contact Ashland to let them know that this? And they said, well, no, you know, maybe yes, maybe no, for the fact that anybody could, you know, put their property into a conservation easement and lock it up in perpetuity without necessarily reaching out to a town.
So the town of Plymouth and Holderness would be taking care of Ashland property as well then?
No, they're, they'll be taking care of it. It's the, they're going to be doing maintenance on that.
They is in Ashland?
The Conservation Commission.
Conservation Commission.
The, the two of them.
So Plymouth and, and Holderness would take care of the Ashland property? That would be in this conservation easement?
Yep.
Potentially.
And, you know, if we look at through the minutes, Bill thinks the board will support it. I was kind of like speaking off the top of my head. Joan suggested that perhaps it could be written into the deed that Holderness managed the beach area. So, you know, that's a good thing.
Interesting.
And Neil, just an FYI, I'm looking at the minutes from the Conservation Commission and suggested that, well, you want to approach the Conservation Commission to let them know about Charlie Corsi and going across their conservation piece of property of Antiny Mountain.
Did they have any discussion?
To the extent that, um, you know, they, they were aware of their interest some time ago, Greg Netner informed them that, you know, let, or let them know that they should reach out to them, and they hadn't done that. So either, you know, maybe they'd lost the contact information or whatever, but, you know, the Conservation Commission is open to, you know, speaking with Charlie again and revisit the, the piece of property, that's the steep area, that corner was kind of a, you know, a steep area that Greg made, made note of. But it's been logged before. And I told, you know, suggested that they might want to speak with Corsi about management as well. So they're going to follow up with that.
Well, I'll try to get ahold of him.
Okay.
They're, they're meeting on Zoom, I presume?
Yep. But, you know, if they, if they're not really like Zoom adept or something like that, maybe they can just like contact Lisa and/or maybe Greg Netner. Because Greg was involved in the initial walkthrough.
Okay.
Anyway, any, any questions and any further questions?
Could be an interesting discussion.
Is there a feel of the board? Does anyone have any?
I mean, from my perspective, I think this is a great project. I, you know, more, more protection of outdoor land space, trails for people to get outside. You know, I think I'm, I'm highly supportive of this endeavor.
Okay.
I'm not sure of a downside.
All right.
I, I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
I, I think this is important piece of the, the whole offering that the town is making to attract students and citizens who are interested in environmental issues to come to our town and study.
And I know this was like a, a pet project of Chris Buckley's and, and also he tried to engage Fish and Game, I guess, to protect that, that area for wood turtles. I guess it's a wood turtle breeding ground and there's a lot in that area and it was kind of like damned if you do, damned if you don't. He didn't want to necessarily publicize that fact because people think that wood turtles are really nice to bring home and, and keep because they're a real, you know, typical looking turtle. And I guess it's like low maintenance, but, um, so he, he didn't want to really kind of like advertise that fact, but, and yet he wanted to protect that area for wood turtle habitat, so. But anyway, I, I think it's a pretty good project. As long as we can figure out the maintenance and town ownership and that kind of stuff. John, any, any comments?
No, I think it's, it sounds, um, sounds very promising and would help take care of that area and it'd be a, a joint venture. So I think it's a win-win.
I killed 20 minutes before you go. So we, um, ended up getting an email from, uh, what the hell is it? Oh, Dan Boynton. And he's a Camden resident. Actually, he and his wife, they own, um, what farm? There's a farm up in Camden that they manage. But he's also into, um, you know, wireless communication and, and, um, I'm not exactly certain what, what he was attempting to do necessarily, but he's, he's, his email said that he's looking for five viable sites for fixed wireless in Plymouth. Preferably existing towers and buildings and all, all he needs is the address and/or coordinates, and if there is one on a municipal building, there is a potential for free internet for the municipality, which I don't think we need, but, and there is no obligation, the need is, what he's trying to do is register the potential sites with the FCC. So the owner of the frequencies don't lose the frequencies and the sites may change in the future or not be used at all. So I think he's reaching out to several municipalities around here. In fact, I went to the, yeah, Deborah Burke's thing over at Silver and Michael was there. And apparently Sir Michael's also being brought into this as well. You know, because they, they have like a tower on top of Tenny Mountain. And, um, you know, that's apparently going to be identified as, um, one of these potential, um, you know, wireless locations. But.
Does the PD have a tower?
If they do, I don't think they, or maybe Scott might be aware of it, but if they do, I don't think, you know, they probably don't want to play with this, you know? This is private, you know? And it's basically for ownership of frequencies. I don't think they want to mess around with that, but.
I don't know if it would benefit them at all.
Like a free internet.
PSU has towers too on top of, is it Williamson?
Yeah.
From the library.
Or does it have anything over on High Street or not? I don't know.
They have that little building there. Did they have a tower out back?
I don't know.
And it depends on what kind of tower you're talking about. Are you looking for just a, a small tower that's on top of a building? Are you looking for larger tower like what's at the PD? Or are you looking for something that's on a mountain side or, you know? Probably depends on what size tower and what it's used for now.
I guess that's the question.
Yeah.
I mean.
You know, I don't know if anyone wants to take with, take this and run with it, but I kind of.
You want him to come in or to log into the next meeting and you can hear what he has to say? I mean, it may be more than what we imagined or.
Yeah.
Maybe less.
True.
The six, six o'clock meeting. I mean, he tells us what he's looking for. We might be able to help him.
Yeah. Okay.
Sure.
When is that one?
It's, yeah, the eighth or something like that. It was like a few days before the 11th, which makes it the eighth.
Before your birthday, two days before. You're going to be here on your birthday.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, I'll turn the celebration, I'll turn it into a celebration.
I'll be here with you, though. I'll be here with you.
We'll have the harvest play. Happy birthday to you.
Great.
So did, did the rest of the board hear that, that we're going to ask them to come in on the eighth at six to discuss what it is that they can offer and what it is they're looking for?
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay. Making sure you heard that.
Love them zooming. We're still going to be zooming.
And anything else on?
Scott may have something. I don't know if he was here to.
Yeah, okay, yeah, Scott.
Yes.
You're here for a purpose.
Okay.
What, what might that be?
Um, well, I've got a couple of updates if you want those.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, one of the updates is you'll take up in your regular meeting on the mitigation grant that I've been working on. But the second one is I've been working with Homeland Security Emergency Management on what is called the 2020 Stakeholders Preparedness Review. And really, it's a three-step review that's done with Homeland Security Emergency Management. I'm taking a look at what the threats and hazards can affect our community. And if they occur, what is the impact on the community? And based on the impact, what are the capabilities of our emergency responders and the community in general on how we'd handle those? So I was in a meeting this afternoon with Homeland Security Emergency Management, and I will start the process tomorrow working with Tom and Steve as well as, um, the Public Works Department on some of the areas in which I'll need their input to fill this out. But it's something that is done annually and it helps when we start to move forward with the mitigation plan and, and updating that for September of 2021.
Okay. Thank you. Hey, so I got a question for, I think I asked this already, but, um, maybe I mentioned it to you or Tommy or whatever, but remember when, um, back in the day when Paul was very anxious to get all of the board at least certified in some regard with FEMA?
Yes.
Wondering if that is still, you know, something that we might want to pursue?
That is. That's all part of the stakeholders preparedness review. Is one of the capabilities of not only the departments that I mentioned, but town in general, including the Board of Selectmen, um, to be included.
Okay. Do, do we need to, I mean, you will, um, I mean, is this something we should have in place before you approach?
No. Um, what I'll do is get this filled out and then facilitate any updates for certification and training that the board may need. Based on looking at the capabilities and the gaps that we may have currently.
All right.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say, and, and other things that are going on with regards to COVID-19, there are new, there are no new updates with regards to the executive orders or the emergency orders. There is an update with Safer at Home 2.0, which addresses indoor hockey. But other than that, with regards to employees and town government, there has not been any updates as of last Friday.
Okay.
But the numbers are still rising.
Yep.
The numbers are absolutely still rising. The one thing that came, I said it on a meeting on Friday, is there's a new, um, program that's for first responders and it's antigen testing. So rapid testing for first responders. It's in a trial basis with the New Hampshire Fire Academy at this time. It'll be rolled out to all first responding departments, so police, fire, EMS, health officers, emergency management directors. And the program has to be administered or will be administered by the fire department because it takes an EMT or a paramedic to administer these tests. There's different guidelines on how the test should be administered and the reporting data and reporting portal that this information goes into. So for example, if Tommy and Steve decide that they want to take advantage of the antigen testing for first responders, what would happen is they would receive the kits. The state has received over 400,000 first responder kits to be deployed across the state. And once a month, um, they would test all of the first responders that would volunteer to be testing. It's not mandatory, it's a voluntary, um, testing. And those tests are submitted in the portal. If you have a first responder that tests positive, um, they're sent immediately to a rapid testing center, um, such as Spear, to have a confirmation test provided. But their hopes is to make sure that the emergency responders are staying in the field, being tested regularly and not going home and infecting their families or loved ones with COVID-19. So that was kind of an update on Friday, and I know Tommy and Steve, um, we've talked about it a little bit and, once the trial period is done, I think they'll make a decision on that.
Thanks.
So you have heard that the high school has a positive case?
Yeah, and they're closing it down for a couple of days, cleaning up the, the school. And so in fact, it was kind of funny because the last time they had a positive, it was with a hockey player.
Right.
And hockey is definitely. And hockey is definitely, it's a cold spot, it's a hot spot. Yeah. And the fact that it's cold and, you know, droplets tend to hang around more so. And ventilation's not that great and they're panting.
Right.
So obviously there's a lot of transmission.
One thing with, one thing where the guys, the student today, unfortunately, the student came to school this morning. It was in the school building. Didn't feel well then when it was tested. So I know the school is working a little bit more diligently with the parents to make sure if you have a child that is experiencing or noticeable symptoms, that you keep that child home and have the child tested. Not that the child was in school for a long period of time, but Department of Health and Human Services has been contacted and they are going through contact tracing right now to see who that student came in contact with this morning while on, on school grounds.
That's rough.
Scott, are they still in the process of identifying those folks? Or do they have some idea of what the impact is yet?
Um, I don't know anything further than about 3:30 this afternoon, in which case the HHS was still identifying those that he may have come in contact with.
Okay.
What else we got going on?
According to our work agenda, do we have non-public stuff?
Just like we do. And there's also several other items that are down at the bottom there that weren't there before. Attorney services discussion.
Well, the attorney was on there.
Yep.
The tax deed sale was not in the union negotiations. We just got an email today. So those are all non-public things.
Okay. And union negotiations, that's not public as well?
Right.
And what about the town planner? Status on that?
Town planner, the committee, the, the group has met. They're setting up, they picked, we had two top contenders. And they're interviewing, they're interviewing three people, the two top contenders. And then they're interviewing one person that was on the secondary list that would be a potential for an interview. So they're meeting again on November 2nd to discuss like strategy and have some questions available. And then they're setting up an appointment for interviews November 6th. That's a Friday. So it's Monday. So six, yeah, that's the second, Monday, the second. And then on the sixth, they're going to set, they're setting up interviews with these people for Friday, the sixth. And then they will come before the board.
Okay, the selection committee, or at least the reviewer committee, will come before the board in like a non-public, at some work session.
Yes. And so that, so that you, so that you can interview and make your choice.
Will that be, is, is the eighth too early? Or could they be on the eighth?
Probably. Because everybody that they asked to have an interview with, they gave two dates. But the first one was that Friday and they all fit into that Friday. So, so the next, the following Monday, we can have, I'll have them get the recommendations together and get everything to you.
Okay.
So we'll put them on for Monday.
That'd be good.
That would be good.
The budgets will be ready for the board to pick up on Friday. So as you stop in Friday, we're still working on the spreadsheet a little bit now.
Updating it. We have, the books are ready. We have.
Right. We're updating the spreadsheet. But if you wanted to stop in on Friday, we'll make sure that the spreadsheet should be in there by then.
Or they can pick up their books anytime and I can email them the spreadsheet. Yep. So.
So we'll have those ready for you. Budget is up a bit right now. So keep that in mind when you're looking through the budgets. The departments have been asked by Kathy to go back through and make some changes. She had given them a target amount that they.
I didn't really give them a target amount. I said, this is what's, this is what's going to happen to our tax rate if you keep your budget the way it is.
Right.
So if you can find anywhere that you can cut.
So there were, some departments came back with some significant cuts, others came back with very minimal cuts. But right now, it looks like if the budget went through, it would be $3.23 increase on the tax rate as being proposed by the departments. So Kathy's been working very hard with them, trying to see if there was something else that we could do to bring that down. But.
Ultimately, it's going to be up to the budget committee. I mean, I've talked to them first and said, find what you can now, so that when you go to the budget committee, you know, hopefully they won't want to slash the thing too much. But, you know, if they're, they're going to have to meet with the budget committee and the budget committee will hopefully, you know, make some, make some good recommendations.
So that, and then we have the wage and classification study will be starting. The information will be going out to the employees on November 3rd. There'll be a Zoom meeting with the department heads on November 4th. And most of the information from the employees will be back, due back to me to go to the MRI the middle of November. So we're hoping by the, maybe the end of December, to really have a good grasp on the wage and classification study. The, the actual job descriptions, that won't be done as quickly. But we're, we're more worried about the actual pay and classification study is the board wanting to see that.
Right.
So that is underway. We're getting there.
Okay. Good.
So you want to talk about Veterans Day?
Sure.
A little bit. John, were you able to get ahold of David Moorhead for Veterans Day as speaker?
No, I haven't, but I'll, I'll get ahold of him tomorrow.
Okay. All right. I mean, Kathy Bentwood was going to contact the vet from the Harbor Homes that actually went up and spoke at the grand opening. So she was going to talk to him. So we'll have two vets, should have two vets. I have a harpist coming in. We couldn't, I mean, we don't want the Penny Valley Baker Band out there because there's too many of them. And with what's going on, we don't want a big group gathering out front. So this, this lady is a harpist at Dartmouth Hitchcock Clinic, the hospital. And she plays beautiful, beautiful music and she is going to record some songs for Veterans Day that we're going to, like, as, we're going to have something out front for minimal people. And Andrew is going to be able to play, like, project her music, you know, out front. And then we'll have the speakers and we'll have Bill giving his opening remarks and closing remarks. And we'll have the people to play taps. And we'll have a closing song by my 16-year-old great niece. So, but that too will be recorded. But it will be projected through the sound system. And then Andrew's going to splice the whole program together and play it like we did for Memorial Day. I thought Memorial Day was a beautiful program. I thought it came off very well. So, and Reverend Linda Barnes from Star King Unitarian Universalist Fellowship is going to give the prayer. So we have a good program going on. So if our board members want to show up with their masks on to support our board chair, that would be great. Support our vets. That'd be great. We could even maybe sign flags for you all to hold and wave. And we'll have you sing. It's a grand old flag. It's a, no.
Sounds good.
It should be good.
And it's Bill's birthday. So you need to sing happy birthday.
Yeah, you'll have to sing happy birthday to Bill too.
Yeah.
They're going to have a color guard?
And then we'll play taps. Just kidding. No, we're not. I wasn't. Just because of COVID, we didn't want too many people. I don't know.
Yeah.
Probably too, too late to get somebody out front. But we were trying to keep the numbers down because we don't want, like Memorial Day, we, we didn't advertise it, but people still gathered like on the front walkway and stuff, you know? Wasn't that many people. So we kind of want to keep it, you know, low-key. Unfortunately, but we still want to, you know, honor the vets. So I think it'll be a good program.
Right.
Be nice when we can get back to normal.
Sunday.
Yeah. Sunday, did you say?
Yeah, Sunday, right. Back to normal Sunday. Day after election. All right. So do you think we should go into non-public? We've got 20 minutes or 19.
Yeah. Well, it won't take too long for, probably won't take that long.
That's true.
Disceptions.
Yep. Union negotiations, the one, one sentence deal.
Did Scott leave or did he put him, did somebody put him in a spare room? No, he's gone. He's coming back for the, is he coming back or is he done?
I think he's done. I told him I'd present it if he wasn't here.
Right.
Okie dokie. So can someone make a motion to go into non-public?
We go into non-public.
Under RSA.
Thank you, ours. Yeah.
RSA 91A colon 3, Roman numeral 2, C and D, reputation and real estate.
So moved.
Is there a second? Who did that? So Mary Ann moved. Neil seconded. Zach, your vote.
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Bill, aye. Non-public.